Okay. Hi, welcome to the Agora Hills Planning Commission meeting. Please silence all cell phones and other electronic devices. If you wish to speak, please submit, if you wish, hold on a second. If you wish to speak or submit a written comment, please complete a comment card for each item and submit to the city clerk prior to the public comment portion of the item. All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order. I defer to Commissioner Stein for the Pledge of Allegiance. I will now defer to the city clerk for our roll call.
Thank you, good evening. Commissioner Reinhardt?
Present.
Commissioner Sharon? Commissioner Stein?
Present.
Vice Chair Roth?
Present.
Chair Anderson?
Present.
Chair Anderson, you have a quorum with Commissioner Sharon absent.
Terrific. Commissioner Sharon has submitted a request for an excused absence. Do I have a motion and a second to approve her request?
So moved.
Seconded.
If we need that to be-
Moved by Vice Chair Roth.
Yeah, Vice Chair Roth.
By Commissioner Reinhardt. I will now defer to the city clerk for a roll call.
Commissioner Reinhardt?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Anderson?
Aye.
Chair Anderson, you have approval four to zero.
Wonderful. This section is reserved, we're moving on to the public comments. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items that are not listed on the agenda that are under the subject matter of the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. If you have something to distribute to the Planning Commission, please do not approach the DA, hand your item to the city clerk, and she will distribute on your behalf. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per speaker, and a speaker's time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons addressing the Planning Commission shall not engage in disorderly conduct that disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. Kimberly, do we have any public comments?
Thank you, no written public comments have been received and no speaker cards have been submitted.
Terrific. We'll move on to the consent calendar. This section is reserved for persons wishing to speak on items in the consent calendar. Kimberly, do we have any comments on the consent calendar?
We do not.
Terrific. Okay. Our next, are there any questions from the commission on the consent calendar? Okay, wonderful. Can I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent calendar?
Commissioner Reinhardt motions to adopt.
Commissioner Stein seconds.
Terrific. Kimberly?
Commissioner Reinhardt?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Roth?
Aye.
Chair Anderson?
Aye.
Chair Anderson, you have approval four to zero.
Wonderful, okay. The next part is probably what you've all been waiting for. Where our next item is to conduct a public hearing to consider approval of a site plan architectural review permit. I will now open the public hearing and defer to the community director, Community Development Director Thomas for staff presentation.
Good evening, thank you Chair. My name's Denise Thomas, I'm the Community Development Director here in the city of Agora Hills. The item that's going to be presented to you today is for a proposal to construct a new single-family detached resident here in, residence here in the city. Our associate planner Katrina Garcia is going to provide you with a staff report, and will be available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you Denise, and good evening Chair Anderson and Planning Commission members. Tonight's item will discuss a proposal for a new single-family residence located in an Old Agora neighborhood. I'll cover the following topics: the location and surrounding vicinity of the proposed project, the existing conditions, the project description, the proposed design, and lastly, staff's recommendation. The project site is located in an Old Agora neighborhood in the RS or Single Family Residential zoning district with an Old Agora and Equestrian overlay. The existing developed site is immediately adjacent to other single-family residences that were constructed in the late 70s to early 1980s prior to the city's incorporation. Several hundred feet from the project site is an industrial complex with multiple buildings that are zoned BPM FCOA. The existing lot is developed with a one-story single-family residence, an attached garage, and a pool and spa. An existing driveway is located on the southwest corner of the lot and is fully landscaped. The perimeter of the lot also contains an existing six-foot-tall wooden fence and low-retaining walls for planters. The image on the left shows the front of the house with the driveway. The image on the right is the rear elevation of the house facing southwest and shows the existing pool and a built-in barbecue on the far-right side of the image. The lot contains a slight slope of about 9%, which is why the rear yard contains multiple levels indicative of the steps shown on the right image. Also shown on these photos are the existing trees and landscaping on the site. It's worth noting that the applicant also conducted a tree survey and found that there were no oak tree species on the site. The image on the right provides a closer view of the built-in barbecue and fire pit. The project proposes to demolish all existing conditions of the entire site, including the main residence, garage, swimming pool and spa, barbecue, fire pit, and existing site walls. The existing six-foot wooden fence would be retained and repaired as needed. In place of the demolished site, the project proposes to construct a new one-story single-family residence at 2,524 square feet with a new 670-square-foot attached garage. The new structure is consistent with the development standards and will be 24 feet in height and cover about 26% of the site. The setbacks of the new structure, including the pergola, are compliant with the existing development standards of the district. Since the site is also located in the residential area of the Old Agora overlay, the project was also subject to the Old Agora floor area ratio maximum, which is 2,526 square feet, and based on the lot size of 12,632 square feet. The project proposes an FAR of 2,524 square feet, which accounts for the exemptions of the garage and covered front porch allowed by the FAR requirements. This exists, this site plan shows the location of the existing structure and pool depicted with a red line against the new structure in green and new pool in blue. Attached to the new house would be an open pergola depicted in yellow. The new pool would be located in the same area of the existing pool but reconfigured to be perpendicular to the length of the lot. The new spa would be detached from the pool and would be located behind the residence with exclusive access from the primary bathroom located on the northwest corner of the house. In order to be compliant with the city's current standards, the project was required to identify 1,500 square feet of contiguous open area for potential horsekeeping. This is depicted with the orange box. The existing site contains multiple levels in the rear yard, which require low-tiered retaining walls and platforms. The project now proposes to have one level in the rear yard, which requires some grading primarily within the horsekeeping area. The grading of the site will ultimately require a six-foot-tall retaining wall, which will taper down toward the east and west sides of the property. The driveway is currently only 16 feet wide and will be widened to 20, to 20 feet as required by the city's code. The project also proposes to fully landscape the site, which also includes the removal of two trees, an olive tree in the rear yard and a crape myrtle in the front yard. However, the project will retain 10 other trees and install three new trees, including olive trees and a citrus tree. The proposed plantings throughout the site are composed of native and non-native plants, which require low to very low water use. As part of the city's review process, the applicant received clearance from the LA County Fire Department for land development and fuel modification. The new residence will be composed of various materials, including stone veneers with a brown-gray shade to accent the primary off-white stucco. An exposed wood-clad beam is also proposed to frame the front elevation and create texture. The roof material is proposed to be a dark gray flat concrete tile with permeable pavers as a primary ground cover for the driveway and walkway. This rendering shows part of the rear and east side elevation. The materials are similar to what is being proposed in the front elevation with a primary off-white color on the building and accent stone veneers. The area by the spa on the right side of the rendering will contain wood cladding on a gray wall. The attached pergola will feature stone veneer pillars and a dark bronze aluminum structure. And the primary hardscape will also be the same permeable pavers proposed in the front yard. As part of the review process, the applicant also met with the architectural review panel and received feedback on their design, which has been incorporated in the design being presented today. Staff would also like to suggest an amendment to the conditions, to the conditions of, to the, one of the conditions to the conditions of approval to address potential conflict with bird nests on the site. Since state law already requires a reporting and monitoring of bird nests within construction sites, staff suggests the following language to be added. If any work, including digging, grading, excavation, or construction is proposed to occur during nesting bird season, January 1 and September 15, the applicant or representative shall submit a nesting bird survey performed by qualified biologists to the city seven days prior to such work. If any bird species protected by the Migratory Bird Treaty Reform Act of 2004 is observed on or in the vicinity of the project site, the project shall be delayed until the conclusion of nesting bird season. So that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approves site plan architectural review permit case number SPR-2022-0029, subject to conditions as amended based on the findings of the attached draft resolution and to make a determination of exemption pursuant to SEQA. This concludes my presentation. Staff is available to answer any questions, and the applicant team is also present to answer any questions. Thank you.
Fantastic Katrina, that was a great job. Do any of the commissioners have questions of staff?
Just a real quick question. I saw that we received a letter from Old Agora HOA. It was dated March 11/23 approving the plans dated December 2022, but the plans that we're looking at are dated March 2024. Have they been able to look at the updated ones? Are they approving what we're seeing now, or are they looking at a different set of plans that were they approved?
The project didn't change as much as when it was, when they originally saw it, so it's possible that I may not have given it to them, or I might have actually emailed them to come to the city to take a look at the latest set. I can't remember which one, but the letter that's reflected in there is pretty much similar to what is being presented today.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Katrina, any chance you have a sense of what the changes were from what Old Agora saw before and what we're looking at today?
I believe it was the stone veneers on the front elevation where the stone veneers was the primary feature of the front elevation, whereas what's presented now is the, the primary wall is now off-white and the stone veneers are just an accent.
Fantastic, so all things considered, very inconsequential.
Correct.
Okay, fantastic. Any other questions?
I had a question about the amendment regarding the migratory birds. It says March, is it March 1 and, or I'm sorry, Jan, January 1 and September 15th? Is that, is that the time period? So is it between January 1 and September 15th is considered nesting bird season?
That's correct. So there, between January 1 and Septem, and September 15 is the migratory bird season, that's nesting season.
Okay, I mean, my, my comment would just be that the way that that's worded is a little unclear.
Okay, we can make that change.
So I would, I would just, I would make sure that it's, it's, you know, depicting the period of time a little bit more clearly.
Can I propose that we just change the "and" to a "to"?
Yes, that's, that's a great edit, Kate. So I just wanted to make sure. So potentially if they started the project and birds were found, I mean, this could be delayed for, you know, almost a, almost a nine-month period?
That's correct.
Okay.
If, if I could add to that, it depends on when in the nesting bird season and what's going on inside the nest. I'm sorry, Kimberly, Denise Thomas, Community Development Director. So if the nest can be relocated and the biologist that's responsible for being, for identifying the nest suggests that as a mitigation, then it's possible that the construction could go on, but if the nests are at a point where you can't move them and the inhabitants, the birds, can't be disturbed at that point, then yes, the act requires that you stop construction.
And if I may add on to this, is it applicable only to the area in the back of the property that's going to be graded, or is it applicable to the entire site?
The entire site.
And is it applicable to the three trees that are removed, or all trees that are on the property?
All trees on the property.
Got it, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, fantastic. Do any commissioners have ex parte communications to disclose? And I'll get started, I went and visited the site today. Any others?
I similarly drove past it, apologize.
I visited the site.
I also drove by.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. I will defer to the applicant. You and or your representative will have a total of 15 minutes for your presentation. Please adjust the microphone and watch for the red light on the podium. When you, when you see the yellow light, you have one minute to wrap up your comments.
Good evening commissioners. My name is Luke Tor, I'm with Appell Design, the architect team, and I think that Katrina went over everything perfectly. Don't have anything in particular to add to that other than just a reminder that this would be a single-family replacing a current single fam, family house, and we look forward to moving on, and the owners are here and we're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Do any of my commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Yeah, if I may, Vice Chair Roth. Quickly, obviously, as Commissioner Stein brought up with the Old Agora HOA letter, curious to know, obviously, that's one step in the process of talking to the neighbors in the community, but I know it's abutting a few homes, just curious what the communication has been with the immediate neighbors around.
Besides the HOA?
Yeah.
As far as our office, we don't have any direct communications with the neighbors. We don't have any.
Yeah, and that can be directed, I presume you're the homeowner? Yeah. So just curious, like, have you had a chance to chat with your neighbors about what might be coming down the pipe?
Yeah, no, physically live in this house.
Okay. Okay, if, do you mind, is it okay for you to come up and repeat the answer to the mic? Thank you.
You want me to repeat that? I said we don't currently reside in the neighborhood, so we don't have any personal contacts with the neighbors. There's, there's none of them that I know on a first-name basis.
Not yet.
Not yet, that's right.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Well, I would just be curious, would you accept this added condition on migratory birds?
I apologize, I'll just stay here. The length of that period just surprised me, I was not aware that this is going to be nine months out of the year, but we will accept, we will accept the condition, we will work around it if we have to.
Wonderful, because I don't think you have a choice. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, before we move on to public comments, okay, no, we did that one. Kimberly, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Oh, wonderful, okay.
I take that back.
Oh, we do, we've got one comment. Tony Wertenbrock? Welcome, Mr. President.
Tony Wertenbrock. I live at 28, 428, across the street, basically, category across the street since 1980, and seen a lot of changes, and I was wondering what it was about. I've been able to have other places I live also, so. But there were, just what I could see when I came in, it looks good. It looks better than what I imagined, because I've seen lots of neighborhoods all of a sudden, two-story, you know, even on Driver, they have that big white house that was built on Buck's property some time ago, which just doesn't fit. I mean, we just talked at the city council meeting about the property on, where Polcomato and Chesro, that corner ridiculous thing there, it doesn't match anything that had to do with Agora, but this looks pretty good. I'm, I'm kind of surprised you don't have more presentation stuff that we used to do. I used to go to these meetings back in, you know, when they started the city, so we had a lot of confrontation, but, no, I think it looks good, and, whatever, I'm trying to redo mine, but.
We may see you here.
Yeah. What's that? Okay, anyways.
Thank you for coming out tonight and meet your new neighbors.
Yeah, well, welcome to the neighborhood.
Wonderful to have you. And things have changed in the state that means that there is, there are not as many issues that come up before the Planning Commission, so we're sad about it too. We'd like to gather as a commission, we wish we were able to do more. And there, in previous years, there has been a whole lot more, and you must be one of the original owners then.
The what?
You must be one of, you must be an original owner of that home.
Oh, yeah.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, it was $100,000.
Theirs was too.
So I've kept some of these houses over the years, so, anyways.
Thank you so much for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the applicant has an opportunity to-
Chair Anderson?
Yes. Oh, we have a second one, oh, wonderful, come on up.
Jeff?
Good evening, wow. My name is Jeff Aviezzer. I live on 27934 Blytheville Road. I've been living in Old Agora for about 25 years, since 1999. I love the neighborhood, and I looked at the project, and I just wanted to tell you that as a developer and a builder for over 25 years, I want to recommend the approval of the project. I also happen to know the Mawors, and I think that will be an excellent addition to our neighborhood in Old Agora. We look for, you know, sometimes, I built quite a few homes here in Old Agora, and sometimes people have this attitude of, I move into the neighborhood, close the gate, and don't let anybody in. And I think that we want quality people, especially families with kids, to come into the neighborhood, there's too many of us that are getting older, and it's nice to have young families with kids. I looked at the project, I think it's a very nice, nicely designed, and I just wanted to tell you that as a, as a citizen, I recommend- I recommend accepting and approving. Thank you.
Oh, my gosh, thank you. Thank you for taking your time to come out tonight and make that recommendation. We appreciate it. Kimberly, any others?
No further speaker cards.
Wonderful. So the applicant has an opportunity to come back up if you would like. If there's anything more that you want to say? Quit while you're ahead. You can tell that things are going in your direction. Okay, wonderful. So before closing the public hearing, do any commissioners have further questions of the applicant or the staff? Okay. There being no further questions, I'll close the public hearing. And we will move on to deliberations. Commissioner Stein, can you get us started?
First of all, welcome to Agora Hills. I love the fact that you're moving, or will be moving into a new home. You're going to be demolishing an old home, building a new one, which will increase our property basis, taxes. So that's a good thing. I'm always encouraging that. I like the plans. One-story, it's not going to impact anybody else. It's in a cul-de-sac, so I'm hoping that construction is not going to take as long, because you'll be able to have up area to build. So I went through all the findings, and I can make all the findings in Section 5, 6, and 7 of the resolution.
Thank you. Welcome to Agora Hills. It's a really magical community. I grew up here, and you're going to enjoy it a lot. And I have to compliment the design as well. You know, it's so nice not to see another generic, like, modern farmhouse. Nothing against them, but they're getting a little saturated. And it's really nice to see that you took into account the character of the neighborhood and also kind of the original spirit of the property, but updated it. So it feels very timeless to me. And I really like all of the natural elements. And I think that what you did with the jacuzzi looks really cool. So I'm a little jealous. But I can make all the findings, and it's a really nice design.
I'm going to echo and keep it quick. I also similarly grew up in Agora, so we both have that together. But welcome to the city. I hope you enjoy it. And it's a wonderful place to raise a family, as I'm doing myself. The project looks fantastic. It's awesome that you have some neighbors coming out in support, obviously, the work with the HOA and our city staff to refine the project, as you've received some recommendations to do so in the past and implement it. It shows a strong sign that you are committed to being good neighbors and residents of the city, so I appreciate that. I similarly can make all the findings, and I'll turn it over to you.
Fantastic, and I feel the same. It's a beautiful, beautiful design. Thank you. And thank you for doing what you're doing here in Agora Hills. It's a lovely home as it is. You know, that existing home would be fine to live in, and the home that you guys are building is just going to be gorgeous. And the schools are a lot of fun, and there are a lot of neat things to do here in Agora Hills. Do you guys live here now? Oh, welcome. We really love our community. Magical is a great way to describe it. And I, too, can make all of the findings. And so with that, I will ask one of my fellow commissioners to make a motion. And Katrina, if you pop that language back up on the screen, it makes it so easy. You can just read it.
And Travis, can I just say "so moved" with the amending language that was provided by staff? Or do you want me to read the whole?
Well, their language up there has with "as amended."
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, and just for clarity, we're adopting the amended language, changing that "and" to "to"? Okay.
Yeah, should we have made that more clear during deliberation? That we all can make the findings with the additional amending language included?
I think we're fine.
Sound fine for everyone?
Yeah, so I think, you know, if you want to just move staff recommendation, you would say "motion to approve staff recommendation as amended," and then you're fine.
Vice Chair Ross, motion to approve staff recommendation as amended. Thank you.
Commissioner Reinhardt, seconds.
Terrific. Kimberly, can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Reinhardt?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ross?
Aye.
Chair Anderson?
Aye.
Chair Anderson, you have approval, four to zero.
All right. Okay, so... Let's see. I will... We've done all of that. I've done all of that. Okay. Are there any comments from the staff? Any comments from the Planning Commission? Oh, 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 hold on a second. I called for... Now I defer. We get the magic word, you guys. It's been a while. I now defer to, sorry, to Community Director Thomas.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. The decision of the Planning Commission shall be final within 15 days from the date of the decision, unless an appeal has been filed with the city council.
Fantastic. Apologies for missing that. Okay, now, are there any comments from the staff? Any comments from the Planning Commissioner? Yes.
It's not related to this project. Is that, that's okay, right?
Yeah, that's-
Okay. So I have a question, and hopefully you can bring an answer to me at some point. I drive past the development that was that Mexican restaurant on Agora Road pretty often. And I had a constituent ask me about it the other day as well. What's going on with it? It's a blight. It's been burned and abandoned for, going on, what, four years? So can we have some more information on the status of what might be happening with that property? And I'm asking, you know, on behalf of a constituent and myself.
So under the Brown Act, we'd have to agendize a kind of longer discussion? So if this is a request to bring it back at the next meeting, then that's doable?
It is. It is. Thank you. And I didn't know exactly how to word that, so I... Travis, you always have our back, and I appreciate it.
Terrific. Well, with that, then, we are adjourned. The next regular Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for 6:30 PM on Thursday, September 19 in the council chambers of the Civic Center located at 3,001 Ladyface Court. The meeting's now adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, and welcome.